We're good, all right. Good evening. My name is Mary Decorse. We are here as the Library Board of Trustees on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024 at 6:00 P.M. This is an open meeting. It was posted on the Auburn website on Monday. I have to ask, we are recording this meeting through Auburn Cable. Is anyone else present recording the meeting? Very good, so we can move on to going to call the meeting to order. When I call your name, please reply that you are in the affirmative here or silent that you're not. I usually have my script and I don't. Lindsay Maker.
Present.
Thank you. Vera Crane.
Present.
Matt Toth.
Present.
Erica Bresaker.
Present.
And Nan Johnson.
Present.
And town employees, if I call your name, please affirm that you're here. Dori Vecchio.
Present.
Excellent, thank you. So we can start the meeting. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start with a review of our minutes. I apologize, I provided the September and the joint meeting minutes. And Erica was kind enough to report out on the November 6th meeting minutes. So we might need to take a few minutes to review our notes.
Yes.
I read them.
Okay, got it. I can give you mine. September, yeah, September 4th. It's okay.
That's not.
Here's September. So here you go. Because I wrote them, so I know what it says. Okay. So please feel free, if you're reading the minutes, to make any corrections. And I will make note. Go ahead.
Just spelling up one name.
Oh, go for it, tell me.
First and last.
Okay.
E R I K A.
Yep.
And B R I E S A C H.
Excellent, I will fix that.
But I also wasn't there.
My name's also A Y.
Oh, yeah, gonna have to fix that. Thank you. Sorry about that, guys. If people want to take a look at the joint meeting, is it weird with minutes? Because we had technical difficulty for a long time throughout the meeting. And then we had a brief interview. So I did not include any end time or start time because it was difficult to distinguish on the video. If that's okay with everyone, I can leave it as. Yep.
Somebody might give you a little bit more time.
Yeah. Okay.
But I mean, it's approximate.
Yeah, right, right.
It was certainly between 7:00 and 7:30.
Okay, I'll write that down.
That was tricky because we couldn't get started.
Oh, my gosh.
We're supposed to start at 6:00. So I think 7:30 did something.
Yes. Took a while.
6:15. 7:15.
I'm writing that down.
Yep. Were you there?
All right. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
From September.
Do we each go each one, Matt?
Sure, September 24th.
Well, first one is September 4th.
Yes, September 4th.
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
As written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with a tie between Vera and Lindsay.
Where do you go?
We'll just do a roll call for that vote. Lindsay?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary, yes. Erica?
Upstain.
Upstain. And Nan?
Upstain.
Okay. Very good. So we're going to move on to the joint minutes, which took place on the 23rd. That was the interview of Nan Johnson, who we're so excited to have back on the board. The brevity has to do with the fact that there was a lot of technical difficulties. It was really hard even to hear when I was listening to the video.
I think this is perfect.
You think so?
Okay, motion to accept.
Okay, so Matt says yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Vera. I'm gonna do a roll call. Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes. Vera, yes. Matt?
Yes.
Mary, yes. Erica?
Upstain.
And Nan?
I guess Upstain is one.
Because you were interviewed, right? Very good.
I mean, that's true momentarily.
Yep, very true. And lastly, we have the notes from the last meeting. We're really excited about that meeting. We got so much, we learned so much about what harvest we're making. Do I have anyone to approve the minutes?
Sure, move.
That is Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is Lindsay with S A Y. I'll remember that next time. Going to do a roll call again. Lindsay?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary, yes. Erica?
Yes.
And Nan?
Yes.
Excellent. You have us. Excellent. So we are going to move to the next part of the agenda, which is item number three, which is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Molly looks like she's ready for a public comment.
Well, if we don't have anyone, I'm gonna say publicly that I'm really excited about the direction of the library. I'm really excited that how staff are really pumped. And they feel very supported. They feel that they have a voice and it's just very palpable in the building. So that's my shout out as a public comment.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have Dori Vecchio, our Assistant Town Manager. She's going to report out on the Library Director's search progress, progress and changes in staffing and the director's reports.
Hey. Thank you so much. And thank you for your kind words. The library staff here is absolutely amazing. Yes. Molly, Dave, all of them, they have stepped up in a way and have taken such an initiative in developing programs on their own and working together. I have two jobs. I can't be here all the time. And honestly, in the last month, I am here even less. I'm up there, I'm still working with everyone here, but it's more electronically. I'm not, my physical presence isn't here as much. And they are thriving. And I get emails almost every day on ideas for new programs and sections of the library that we need to expand upon or just really great ideas. So I just want to say that we are so lucky in the town of Auburn to have these employees. So I have a lot to tell you about. We'll start with the searches. I know everyone's waiting with big breath. So we had, and Nan can vouch for this, every interview was someone that could do this job amazingly. Every interview.
Amazing.
Which has made it extremely difficult and the analysis extremely difficult. We are on the threshold of a matter of a day or two of hiring someone. The same thing with the Associate Librarian. We did extend an offer and that didn't pan out, so we put it out again. We interviewed again last week and I extended another offer today with someone new. We're very excited to bring this person on and have that additional staffing so that we can rotate weekends and whatnot. And the other thing that's really important, and this is really me working with Molly and Dave, and they know this library better than me, but everyone's cross-trained. Everyone is cross-trained. Molly and Dave are cross-training. They all do the front desk. So there's not just one person stuck in one place. So that's so important. So by the next meeting, you'll, obviously, it's two months away, so that's really unfortunate. But you will have your new library director sitting right here. I'll probably come with them. But it's just an exciting time. And I think, I honestly know that any one of those candidates would have been an amazing hire. They were just, even Nan agreed when we met afterwards. We're like, okay, we can't really go wrong. The pool of candidates was far exceeded my expectations. So.
Question, Dori.
Sure.
You said there's going to be a director and assistant director?
Associate director.
Associate, okay.
I mean, Associate Librarian, sorry. What did I call it? Did I say assistant?
Assistant Director. No.
Yeah. I've been rushing all day, so no. It's a library associate.
Okay. Will that person have an MLS?
No.
No.
This is an entry level position.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no problem. So to go into some of the progress and the programs and things that we're doing here, I don't know if you guys noticed the new periodical section.
I did, it's fantastic. I'll have to check it out.
Where is it?
Just outside the seat. Those old metal things we're jutting out. It's open now.
We still have some work to do there. But we've got the new, actually, they came in quicker than we expected. We have the new cabinets specifically made for periodicals. We've got the current version in the front and you can put the past versions below. We are not completely staffed with all the additions, but we did go to, I think Molly went to pick up the new subscriptions. Because our subscription doesn't start till January. So we wanted to stock it as much as we could. So some of the new periodicals for the public, I want people to know so they come. All recipes. And we actually took this list from social media, from what was said and what people said they wanted. And we're open to suggestions for anyone who has, who wants to see something here. We want to hear from you. That's what it's all about. So All Recipes, Cooks Illustrated, Downbeat, Essence, Family Handyman, Good Housekeeping, HGTV, Food Network, Mother Earth News, Newsweek, The New Yorker, The Pioneer Woman, Real Simple, Scientific American. Do you want me to go on?
I think that's pretty good.
I'll give you a copy. I'll give you a copy later.
We've also started cataloging and releasing magazines immediately to begin in January, like I said. Instead of making the current month non-circulating. So as soon as they come in, they'll be on the floor right away. Programs. So it's been a lot of fun working with the staff together to try to figure out, you know, talk to the community, see what people want. We really had to keep clean slate, which is a lot of fun. So we've had Pestle Painting with Greg Macac. It was a great program. It was right here in this room. We had a storyteller, Rebecca Rule, came in. We did a fall cleaning workshop, which was fun. A children's author visit and learning to draw comics, we had that. We had a holiday book tree drop in craft for teens and adults. And if you go outside in the library and you see these trees with library books on them, that was it. It was a lot of fun. Lego unicorns was this past weekend on Saturday. That was Dave's, he's like, let's make unicorns. So I'm like, let's do it. We started our storytime for our toddlers and so ages one and three and three to five. We started that a few weeks ago. Everyone's getting acclimated. It's been very successful. We're gonna learn, we're gonna do and add in like zero to one. It's just we're trying to just weed out all the issues and the problems. But that has been very well received and it's been a lot of fun, the people that are working on that. And these are people that didn't necessarily do it before and they're very passionate, so. We also, the board had recommended last time we were here, is to have some quiet space in here. Sometimes the library gets very loud. So a few times a week, and this is advertised everywhere that we have, we have at least two days a week, four to six hours of quiet time in this room. We'll set up, we set up tables and chairs if people want to come in. It's been used a few times, not that much, but at least it's here if someone needs it. So, and we have it posted in the library and we also have it posted on social medias in our constant contacts so people would know. One of the things I talked a little bit about at the last meeting, and this was sort of, this was a lot of fun for me. It all happened all at once. I was doing research to learn about the library and I'm like, how'd they get these speakers? Speakers are amazing, I want them here. And I got an email from the Library Speakers Consortium. Well, we joined them December 1st. We are now part of this brand new initiative to provide remote access to anyone who holds a library card. They can go on our website and sign up for the remote speaking engagement. And they actually, during the speaking engagement, they can ask questions remotely. So they can, there is some interaction with the speaker. And also, they have the ability to go back and look at past speakers and listen in to speakers that we've had in the past. These are, some of these speakers, it costs like $15,000 to $20,000 if we actually brought them here. So to have that, the speaker be available for our residents was super exciting to me and to staff. So this is our first month. It's on our website. I hope people go and take a look. I have seen that we can go on and see if people are looking, and they are. So they're looking all the way back at the past events as well. So that's been a lot of fun. Upcoming programs, again, these are done by the staff here. Gingerbread Houses for Teens. We had a teen event last month that was a lot of fun. It was fully booked. Creation Stations in the Merriam Room during school vacation for Christmas. So staffing still isn't where it needs to be. So this allows people to come in and have some creative space. So that was actually new, just thought of this week by someone I know. Monthly Book Clubs for Adults and Teens. That's been a lot of fun. So we have those both still going. And we're in the process of getting a license to show movies in this room.
That is cool.
And we're hoping to provide, we're working with Border Pulp, popcorn and like water or like. So we're getting a license so that we're able to show legally movies that we can show. And we'll set up the room, how it needs to be set up. We want to see how people like to sit. These chairs aren't that bad, but we have other chairs that we'll bring in as well and we'll screen it right off the TV. And who wants, who doesn't mind like popcorn and a good movie? So that is coming soon. Oh, yeah, I'm not done. So we also started our registration platform. I don't know if you remember last time at the meeting, we had been notified a week prior that our event scheduling was going to be non-existent within a week. So it was immediately trying to figure out who we could get. And it worked out pretty well. We got someone new. We got them up and running within the pack, like, I don't even think there was much of a layover, maybe one or two days. So we have a brand new system that's up and running. We've installed two computers. I don't know if you've seen them. We have a computer in the both children's rooms now because we were seeing that some parents were leaving their children to come out into this other area to work on a computer. So they're not set up yet, but we're working with IT to get them set up and get the licenses in place. So that will allow parents to be in the same space as their children. So that was, and that's, you know, just talking to the employees here and being aware of, you know, what they're seeing parents do, what they're seeing children do. Because it's just so important to have the pulse of this whole, you guys know, the whole library. So the other thing I'm really happy to say is that we've increased our books by 1,000 since October. It's a wide variety of books. The majority, like fiction, fantasy, nonfiction, cookbooks, we did. We updated 17 travel books that were outdated. We did children's books as well, but we're really excited about getting new books. And staff love new books. And now I love new books. I love the smell of them and they laugh at me all the time because the first thing I do is smell them. I know. And last, oh, I just have a little bit left. So we also hung the plaques. So they look really nice. They've been hung everywhere. We did arrange the furniture over by the periodicals. We're gonna play it by ear and see how people like how it's set up. I would love to put like a lamp. We don't have the electrical capacity, but it's something I'm gonna work on, especially with the construction. I feel like if we're gonna make any changes, it should be done then. So going right into that, I'm getting a quote to replace the rug. That's really not in good shape.
Wonderful.
It's not an easy project, but if we're going to extend and blow up that whole back wall, I wanted to at least look at what the cost would be so that we know. Because it would be, I think it would be negligent not to. There's just so many areas out there that just aren't good. So we're gonna look at that. And if we do rip up the rug, then I might be able to put electrical.
Oh, yeah.
And get some areas where electricity is that isn't now. We did put a couple children's tables in the children's room. I am working with the friends right now on, they're helping to pay for some of the children's furniture. I'm just working with the friends on that, but also accounting on how to arrange the account for that purchase. And the rounder display is set up near the surf desk. That is staff picks. One side is staff picks, the other side is winter holiday. And they go through that all the time and they like to change things up, which I love. So that's, that's it. It's been a lot of fun.
That's it? That's a lot?
It's been a lot of fun. Yeah, a lot of creativity going on and just excitement on the direction the library's going and the boards. You know, we're listening to you because you hear from the public as well.
Yes.
And we pay attention to the public. And when they come in and staff talks to them and they're the first ones to say, hey, someone just asked for this. What are your thoughts? And like, if it makes sense, then that's what we do, so.
Questions, comments?
I have some questions and they're related to the last meeting, actually. That's right. The Sound Room Committee, is there such a thing yet? And you can call it sound, it's a trustees rule.
Okay. So the status of that is just this week I got the quote for the fire suppression system. Because we have to do it, we need a fire suppression system and we also need an alarm system. They're two separate things, but the same, you know what I mean? So I just got the quote for the fire suppression system, I think it was today, this morning. I'm gonna forward that to NOLDS Architects. They're the ones who are doing the design. The design is pretty much done, but they need to incorporate that. So when it goes out to bid, it's in that. I'm checking with the fire department on the alarm part of it. And then we should be good to do the specification part of the bid and hopefully send that out in the next couple months. It's not as quick as I would like. It took, since the beginning of October, to get the quote for the suppression system. It's, it was a lot. It was a lot for them. So, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get it through the whole building.
Okay, that's one. The size of that, is the full length of the back of the building?
It is.
Good. I know there was some concern about that.
Yeah.
Well, that's it. Because it was, both of those questions related to that.
Yes.
Addition.
It's exciting. I look forward to seeing, or actually bringing in, actually, we should bring in the architects to have you guys see the design.
That would be awesome.
They showed me, they came in and they showed me and it's even nicer than I thought it was gonna be. There are some things I really want to address. There's a couple windows that will be the last, like, few windows that aren't fixed and they're not in good shape. So I really want to include that as well. And, you know, we want the library to be in the best shape it could possibly be. I understand that there's funding issues and there's concerns, but I also think that we need to look at every little bit. And you need to know and I need to know and the town manager needs to know, if we don't fix that, it will need to be fixed in the next few years. So we just need to plan appropriately. And it might be a capital request or maybe we can incorporate it into the plan.
Are you guys considering a space planner for that, a library planner?
This week. When's the 13th? I'm, the 13th, I'm meeting with the space planner on the 13th.
How cool is that?
Just off the top of my head, I don't have my phone here, but yes. So I was supposed to meet them a couple weeks ago and they had to cancel. I worked through Mass Library Systems. So they're coming here to help us because after we met and I talked to the staff here and we agree, there could be a much better way to use the space we have.
Yeah, I agree.
And what I'm hearing from everyone, staff and you and the public, is almost like a pod-like thing. A space where someone can go in and do an interview, much like the history room. Except obviously it can't be the history, it is, but we need more of that. And what that actually looks like, I'm not sure yet, but yes, we're gonna be, that's this week.
Yeah.
I want to get that in place so that the report comes out when the director comes on, so it's already in the works.
That's excellent. Everything is looking fantastic. Periodicals, seating, I came in the other day, I ran around all excited.
Did you?
I did.
That's what I do too.
I was like, oh, my God. So I had a lot of fun. I didn't take anything out because I couldn't choose. Sorry, I was like, I'm gonna come back. I nearly ran back in, but now we're closing.
We walk around, the three of us walk around the library a lot.
Yeah.
And we talk about how things are set up and how it looks. Is it aesthetically pleasing?
Yes.
I like things a certain way. They like things one way. And we try to incorporate all of it because we're all different. So it's been, it's actually the most fun part of my job right now, is just working with the staff, listening to them. They have great ideas. One thing, we did have the students come down, I didn't give an update on this, come down from the high school about the teen room. We're still looking into that. They do have some requests or trying to see if it will work out. Like seating and gaming and things like that that we need to work on. But maybe, like, we might need help with that moving forward.
That's good.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to tackle that while I'm in this position, but it's definitely something that will be moving forward.
Dori, when the space planner comes, is it okay to think about what might have to happen to that big expansion in the children's room?
Oh, yeah. I don't want to leave anything off the table. I want to see what they say. They're experts at this.
Yeah.
I'm not going to guide them in any way to say, don't consider this or don't consider that. I want to see what they say. I want to put them out there and see what they say. And then work from there and see what makes sense. Yeah. We do have a lot of space.
Yeah.
Better than I thought we did. So. Not as much space out there.
Right.
You know? It's an older building, so it's sort of broken up quite a bit. So I'm not sure what we can do, but I'm sure we can do something.
Well, I think that's where they, they're just, they're experts at that. That's really good.
I know, yeah. So I'm excited about that. So next time I'll have an update on that too.
Excellent.
Now, do you, did, I see that you brought the expenditures. Did you want to talk about those payable? Did you want to talk about that at all?
Oh, I don't know. Does everyone have a copy?
Yeah.
Well, that's okay.
We'll make it happen. There we go. Oh, we're gonna go, we need another one up in here too.
We gotta go the other way too. Sorry about that. There you go. Ready, go look and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
You guys? See if there's anything standing out too much. You're gonna see the bigger expenditures are books.
That's always a good thing.
Yes, it is.
And also looking like the Children's Museum and Holyoke are evaluating all the passes, what's used. And this is, you know, the staff had brought it up, is to look at what do people actually use. And retract some of the ones that aren't used and maybe consider others. So they've been doing that, which is, it's almost like a moving target, but it keeps everything updated.
You asked about that. Anytime, I wonder if once you have findings, if people want to be equipped with that.
Oh, absolutely.
The next director of reports.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because we can ask about that a lot.
Yeah.
Could you just not give an answer on that?
I have to say, when, every time I'm here, they, someone's called to the front to get a pass. And every single, multiple times.
Yeah, oh, they're very smart.
Very well used, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. No, I know we have a very generous pass program and it's very extensive and it's definitely more generous than area libraries.
Yep, definitely.
But I was curious, like, is really literally everything getting used? Like, how often do people go to the Game Bar Museum for a year?
Yeah.
Because, you know, and if it's used, that's excellent.
Yeah. We are looking into that. And it might be something, when we talked about it together, it's something that we're gonna revisit because it's gonna change. And as people come in and they ask for places as well. And the staff here is just so great. They're like, someone's asking for this book or someone's asking for this pass. And we try to get it. We try to, like, if it makes sense. And because then we can monitor its usage, because I'm sure it's not just one person who wants it, so.
I see several $80 changes for.
The New York Times.
Which is awesome. New York Times.
We have the periodicals in here, so. I see one.
That's the recurring subscription, right?
Yes.
For New York Times?
Yes, it is.
And I repeated one, so surely $80 doesn't cover the year.
No, not, no, $80, I'd have to check to see how much $80 covers, but it's probably, I don't think it's that much, honestly. Not as much as.
There's no data, I can't see.
Let me see, so December. C1, 12-3. C1, um 12th, 3. And then. So I think it's a monthly. It looks like that's monthly, because there's one in September as well.
How many copies of the New York Times does the library receive?
We get several copies, um they, we keep them, so I was just talking to, it's so funny, you bring several, just talking um this week to staff about, we keep a lot behind the counter and we put signs up because they, sometimes they walk. But I sort of was wondering if maybe we could put some out, keep some out and then keep some under in case they do walk. Because I just like the fact that they're available for people to just come over and grab.
Yeah.
Um we have probably, I don't know, if it's five to 10 of each, you know, newspaper. So I think it's doable. I'm just afraid they're all gonna walk and then I'm not gonna have, someone's gonna come in and not have.
Is that standard practice, to have multiple copies of newspapers?
Yes, yeah.
Things, things will.
And not only that, multiple people come in at one time to look at the same paper. And I think I said at the last meeting, it's really interesting to watch in the morning, that's exactly what happens. And it's a lot of the same people and they come in every single day and they sit there and they read their newspaper.
We gave them our T and G subscription, so I can understand that I missed it, so I'll be one of the ones.
Yeah, oh, good. Perfect.
But yeah, I was thinking if it's the, if it's a recurring eighty dollar charge, then it must be for multiple newspapers. Cause that's.
Yeah, oh, it is, it is. We have several copies.
Have we talked about the hotspots yet?
Um I think we mentioned it at the last meeting, we were talking about it for, I was talking about it for the Library of Things. That um I have not worked on at all in the past month because during the interview process, I learned a lot about Library of Things. And I learned that it's not something that me in my part-time capacity am going to be able to put together the way it really needs to be put together. We have the lists, I even have the list of places we're gonna buy things from and the amounts. But I don't wanna start purchasing if it's going to um mess up how it comes in, how it's coded. We do have a lot of things already labeled and ready to go that was done before I got here. Not a lot, but we have probably 20, maybe 15 in things. Um but there's a lot more to be had and I had hotspots there and I found out that T-Mobile has a special program for libraries. And I wanna include it in that, but thinking about it, is it something that we should have for, I don't know, for anyone here? But I guess they can connect to our network, so I guess maybe not, like, cause.
This is really for home use.
Yeah, so it is, so it'll be the Library of Things.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna get several of them, I just didn't wanna, I wanted someone with more expertise in libraries of things than me.
That's pretty good that some of the candidates had things to offer about that, yeah.
They did, and it was very interesting and that's what I realized, because I was all gung ho, I was gonna have it done by now. Um and once I started learning more about it and how the tracking is done and how the, not necessarily insurance, but what needs to be done for each particular item, when you're storing it, when you're counting it, when you're preparing it, when you're cleaning it, when it comes back, when you're contacting the person, when pieces are missing, when you do, when you don't. Um I really wanted someone, and I honestly think we might need a staff person who's responsible for that in addition to other duties.
Sure.
Like, it's not just gonna be something that everyone, everyone will be trained, but not everyone will manage. It's, it's pretty big. We have talked about different areas of the library that we wanna put things. Um but we also have competing ideas about like working with the museum and having, you know, things like that or, you know, the history room and the different historical items that we wanna bring in here, so it's sort of competing in that way, but I think we need to have some sort of display so people know we have it.
Yeah.
Um and I, I think at one of the meetings, before I even started here, someone had mentioned like the DVD holders. And we have a bunch of them and we save them so that we could use it for that purpose, if that's what we decided to do, but um it's still in the, still in the works. Yeah.
I can understand the need to wait.
I really wanna do it, though, just so you know.
It's surprising how many libraries have this, well established. So we have a lot of input, a lot of feedback from how it works or.
Yes.
Does it work?
Right.
Yeah, and I was like, hmm. If I could stay down here all the time, then it would have, yeah, we would have had a great time with it. But I have worked a lot with staff on it.
Great.
Um and we have the lists and I think it'll be a little bit easier for the new library.
Is it something for either the policy development or just like how can the board support when that director comes in? I guess policy writing capacity seems like one thing that for sure is in the board's capacity, so I think.
I think that's a good idea. Um writing, adopting a policy on how that works.
Yeah.
Would be really good.
I agree.
Um any guidelines and the staff here is really good with that, is they're very structured. So any guidelines and it actually gives them what they need to be able to, you know, if, if someone comes in and says, well, I don't know, I wanna take this for three weeks. Well, actually, no, you can't, the board of trustees has set this rule, you know, it sort of helps.
Yeah.
Um so I can, I do have some policies that I can share with you, but I think that'd be great if that was developed.
Yeah, that would be good. Seems like a good life first foray and so working with the new director too. To coordinate and collaborate on a policy for that and that's gonna be an early mandate.
And they're gonna have, they're gonna have their own ideas and expertise as well that fires these mine.
Yeah, and templates for things, so it makes sense.
I got a little subtimity, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
If there's anything else we can get together on the computer, I'll come up to my stuff.
Oh, yeah.
It's good.
I haven't thought about that, that policy for the Library of Things, but that does make sense.
It does.
Does anyone have any further questions about the bills payable or any other questions or comments about Libraries of Things?
What's Daily History LLC? Random things, um they're all page one.
All page one?
They are the, the last, um the last page one. Cause they have the last page two.
I see a lot of page ones, yes.
Can you repeat the title?
Daily History LLC, $400, it's the same page as Your Membership.com.
Oh, look at that.
So I was just curious about this page, cause I was like, oh, you know.
So that is the cost of our November 16th um event that we had. Which was, where is it, where is it, where is it? It was. Um Rebecca Rold, storyteller, 1620, the first year. So that's what that was, one time.
And what is Your Membership.com page?
Is that the same page?
Same page. Oh, all three of my questions are on that page, I got that one.
That was, um that was the posting for the library director and the ALA.
That's awesome.
That's money worth spent.
Absolutely. And what's the Asavet Interactive? That's the last one.
That is our new software program for events.
Awesome.
Nice.
They honestly were great to work with too. They trained us all, like remotely, it was, it was very good to work with them. And I think they got very busy fast, because there was a lot of our libraries that were working on the same platform.
Very cool.
Dory, when you had interviews with people, did you talk to any of them about their grant writing experience?
That was a Nan question. Yes, we did.
Yeah, some of them, um within state. Sometimes they would go out to the ALA and a lot of the cultural council away, um we've been using. But yes, yes, we did, they were amazing.
Cause I, I had this stuff from the Massachusetts libraries and it's just loaded with opportunities for grants. And we've never done that. And I think that'd be really excellent, so obviously.
Does it, can it come from the trustees or does it have to be library staff?
Well, the library's director. I mean, I suppose we, if she needed or he needed any kind of help, that we could do that for them, you know.
Yeah.
Or at least research and possibilities.
Sure.
Any further questions? You're very thorough and we're very excited to have you.
Really.
Um and again, I'm just, I know I'm redundant, but to, to see the library staff really just have, you know, pep in their step and they're, they're just really, you're happy. I've asked them if they feel that they're, you know, their, their skills are being utilized, absolutely, so that, that's exciting.
Yeah.
They feel appreciated.
We have one, just yesterday was admitted to um a MLS program.
Yay.
Just yesterday, yeah, she was super excited. Um I'm so glad I was here when it happened, she was looking at everyone, she's like, oh my god. Um and her background, her, she was a criminal justice major for her bachelor's. So we're really excited to have her go on, she loves it and she's been taking on a lot of the children's programs, so.
Nice, awesome.
Very exciting.
That's the first time that's happened, I think, that's really good.
She also was one of the ones that I moved up. When I first got here, she applied for the senior library associate job, but was given the library associate job. So we moved her up to where she should be. Um she has excelled, all of them, honestly, I've been so grateful, have done a great job.
Nice.
Well, you must thrive on your encouragement. There you go.
Thank you again.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
The next item um is a Lindsay Vera leadership, which is strategic plan, questions, tactics. Sort of a discussion around, the end of our last meeting, Lindsay said, we really need to take a look at the strategic plan in terms of how we're gonna plot out our future meetings. So I'm gonna hand it over to Lindsay and Vera.
I will say, I'm not a kind of active progress on this from the last meeting, things have been a little wild on my side, but um one thing that does occur to me as we're kind of segueing from Dory's update is as the new director comes on, that person should really be very heavily involved in this process. And so I'm wondering if in January during the ops period for us, that would be a good opportunity to schedule a meeting or two with the new director to just start to level set on strategic plan, like what we, what we want that to look like and what that process might be, because I, I just imagine that that person is gonna need to be pretty heavily involved.
That was brought up in the interviews as well, the strategic plan, they all.
Timing, that's the trick.
The timing's the trick. The new librarian should be starting on or around the 13th of January.
That's really, okay, so.
Maybe February. We've got the holidays and it's just a.
The, you know, the, the director of the library actually should be involved and want to be involved. We, that was our responsibility given by the town manager to do that. But the expectation was that we were going to be working together. And that never happened.
Right.
And it's probably why all the materials that were saved from that have disappeared. Dave's looked for it, Molly's looked for it, and we don't have it, it's gone. And it's a shame, but I've got some memory on that. Limited, but no, it's not limited, I, I have a lot of memory on that, so I'm very happy to share what we did. And I, I think a, a library director who's interested in that would be able to offer a tremendous amount of direction. And so that the board doesn't have to do, if the board does have it and the director does have, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, and I mean, I think just in reading through it and looking at the, you know, the feedback to the survey questions, which was appended, um which was rich with, actually, Dory, I feel like the last meeting, I was looking at it as you were speaking, I was going, check, check, check. Like, you know, like so quickly, we're kind of caught up to where I think we agreed to be. And so I think in some ways it's almost a good onboarding opportunity too for us to get to know them, but also for us to all familiarize at the same time and think about it as, as one unit, because there, yeah, there's just so much in there that either maybe we weren't able to accomplish because of COVID, so it's gonna carry over, or we did accomplish and we should celebrate that and then, and then really just hone in on what needs to be added and whether we do a public survey again, which is a lot of work and maybe a little less time to do it. Given that I was looking and I think we started in September, um the year prior. And so this would be starting a little later than, than that process was started, but I think we've got a good foundation, so.
Well, and I, I think the board's very interested in this and the library director will be very interested. There'll be no resistance anywhere.
Right.
And so this, I think you're right, this can be done. And Nan was involved in that too, so she, she knows the kind of work that has to go along with that. And I'm very happy to share whatever I can with it, but I, I think I'd be in good shape.
Right.
It should be fun, actually.
I think it should be.
You know, if we're all working together.
Well, all kinds of fun, but I was gonna say. Like, they might be getting a late start because previously it was started in September, but I think it's to our benefit because so much has shifted since September. Massive amounts of progress have been made. So had we started in September, I would have said, let's review and see if, if the majority has been met or not. Do we just stick with the same plan and renew it and ultimate the goals? But it looks like we're just knocking them out as we go, so.
Yeah, I almost wonder if maybe then the January exercise is us doing a little bit of work too, but maybe, Dory, we can collaborate a little just to look at the tactical questions that we had attempted to put together that were tied directly and just answer them, just the same dancers, right? Just, it doesn't need to be an intensive process, but just something where we can show to the public too that like this, that we thought about, you know, we really addressed these issues or we, or we didn't and why. Um because I think that that's just as important in setting up the next one as anything, you have to look back, read it forward, so. So that, I'm, I'm just trying to think of like what are manageable things that we can do, recognizing that there will be new leadership, that's a library coming on and how far ahead do we get with it before that person's on? I, I feel like I've just been having a hard time getting started, because I, it's in the back of my head that so much.
I think it's reasonable.
But I think a fundamental point that Vera brought up, we had a number of meetings with Ed and Dory just to help us understand how we're going to move ahead and uh as far back as last summer, I remember you bringing forth the question, does the library director understand the expected role? Or I, I would use the term articulate, understand the articulation between that person's role and what the body, what the board of trustees does. I think a real, I, I love the idea of an initial meeting, not necessarily full-blown planned meeting, but a meeting of articulation, hearing about the library director's vision, talking about how we can articulate and having that agreement from the jump versus, you know, what, it was, we all came on to the board at different points. I know, Nan, you were in the board the longest, but it seemed at different points like it, what is the expectation for the interface between the board and that library director? And I would love to be a part of that meeting, very casual meeting with coffee or whatever, just to have a discussion, but to come to an agreement about how we're going to work together.
If I may, Madam Chairperson, um Chairwoman, sorry. I don't know if you're aware, but um starting February 1st, I'm the acting town manager.
Nice.
And is retiring after 40 years in government.
Okay.
So I just want the board to know that I have a passion for the library that I honestly didn't have a few months ago. I didn't, I didn't understand how wonderful it is. I love the amount of work we have to do, I love that we're growing together. But I'm gonna work with the director that we choose to make sure that all the things that we need to do together get done.
Yeah.
So I will be interim, I'm gonna go for the town manager job.
Yes.
I don't get it, I, you know, still be the assistant, but I am committed to moving this library forward. The, the community deserves that from us and the more I learn about the library is how important it is and a lot of it, Nan, through the interview process and listening to her, like, people need us more than we need them. They need us, so we need to provide them the best services possible, we need to listen to them and we need to engage with them. And that's part of the process of asking the questions, so I'd be happy to work with you on questions, to keep it, to even start it. Um because every time we ask the question about strategic planning in the interview process, they all knew that it was up. Every one of them knew, they did their homework, they knew it was up, they've all worked on them before. And they know, they know even by watching the meetings, because they've all watched them. Um where, where we're at and what needs to be done. So I will definitely, even from my new role as interim town manager, move that forward.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. And I, I think it's good to have like the whole fresh start and reassess where we're starting from, because it's a different place than it would have been, as I said, in, in September, so all kinds of new and exciting opportunities.
Well, I'll send you the open format of those questions, just that we've worked on a little.
It's a shame we've never had a chance for you to talk about, would you send those to everybody?
Yeah.
Really, because that was work, it was done, we should have had a chance, but we.
It wasn't wasted though, so we're gonna.
No, it's not wasted.
Does the board each have a copy of the previous strategic plan?
It's, well, it's on the. It's on.
The top one or the one?
It's on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be looking on my.
And actually, if anybody needs a copy, they can come here and get it printed. That's not a problem.
No, great, yeah.
I've got mine.
So in terms of, um I, I think that sounds exciting to meet with the new library director and you, as you said, February 1st is your acting. Awesome. I, I, so that sort of segues into plotting, plotting out objectives for the spring of 2025. At the last meeting when Dory was presenting, I, it, it became very clear to me how much progress we've made as a board, so I'm just really excited about that, but one of the things that we did last.
But one of the things that we did last September is we said, we're gonna do this, 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 and we did. We did every, we were, we, we were very progressive. So asking the board, when we turn, turn about, when we talk about plotting out objectives to the, for the spring, do, do we want to talk about that at this meeting? Do we want to see, just want to hear from, from the board?
You know.
Like major, major objectives, like generalized, you know, objectives.
I think to work on the strategic plan would be a huge thing.
Yep, yep.
I mean, really, it's, you know, it's February until, you know, Q4 and really we want to have it pretty much ready to go by Q4, right? I think we should be pretty well along by then, so it's really only a few months when you think about it.
So I'm wondering, just gonna use, I know you're the assistant town manager and then you will be the acting. Is it possible when the person is on boarded, if we could as soon as we can have a meet and greet?
Of course.
That would be awesome, that would be step number one, right? And then we're going full tilt boogie to really, really try to plot out the plan, the articulation of the plan, and then that's where our subgroups come in. We, we had a lot of help in the last, um, strategic plan. I know Suzette Dowd was really, really impactful in terms of having a lot of focus groups. I think, I, I'm excited to hear about all the teen involvement here, so, so.
That's new.
I can, so I agree, I agree that the strategic plan is really going to drive us for the, for the, through the end of the year.
Erica, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, outside of the strategic plan, waiting for the new director so that we can kind of get a sense of what their thoughts are. And then also taking sort of stock in what the staff thinks as well.
Right, right.
And, and the direction for goals, what they think is doable through the end of the year as well as what we kind of had thought we were going to do at the beginning. And, and I, and I just, I'm curious with that person.
It's true, because we're wrapping the strategic plans, there's still time.
Yeah.
It's still like, you know, figuring out some goals and, and aligning on that to figure out what's really still a priority from the existing strategic plans. And would it be nice to show even more progress?
Yeah. And going back to the point that Matt made earlier, I think that, that Nan, Suzette was really, was, was, um, a key person at getting the outside input, but I'm not sure we got staff input at all for the last strategic, did we?
No, no.
No.
Uh, even ours, even our, we got very limited. The consultant found it very difficult to get that information.
Right, right.
And so we had very limited information, actually, almost none.
Right.
And I mean, it would be so valuable.
It's, well, and their voice, their voice is really important. I mean, they, they, as you said, it's your team, you run the show, right? And, and they were not really, um, let's just say they were not included in a process that was all about their, their livelihood. So, so yes, I'm excited about that and I'm most excited, I want to be a part of the focus groups this time.
That's, that's where the consultant came in, uh, and we got really messed up because of the pandemic.
Right.
But they were all established. Everybody had dates for when they were gonna happen, then all of a sudden everything was closed. But we had a lot of community interest.
Input, yeah.
And input in wanting to be a participant. Then they filled out information for us. It's not the same as a conversation that you'd have in a focus group.
Right.
And, but, and the focus groups were only adults.
Right.
Remember we had something that we did later on with students.
Right.
But in the beginning, that was all with adults.
But Suzette met with the former superintendent, Dr. Mary Ellen Benau, and she was generous and gave, you know, insisted that, you know, students, I think it was grades five through 12, participated in surveys and that's what drove us having membership in terms of focus groups. So, yeah, it really is a, it takes a village.
I'm picturing a room full of four-year-olds. Mine has a lot of opinions about this place, so.
You can win that one.
Got a lot of ideas.
I know how to play with four-year-olds, but I don't think I do very well.
Consultee turn with us.
No.
Yeah, no, it's, that's a great idea, yeah.
Awesome. I, as I always say, middle school is like four-year-old revisited, kindergarten revisited, and then it happens again. And then, of course, it happens every so, so many years of our lives. The next, um, are we done with discussion there before I can move to? We, I neglected in the last meeting to make a motion or a discussion and a vote on to have hybrid meetings moving forward. So, um, does anybody want to lead that piece or to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we can talk about it.
That sounds great.
To have our meetings a hybrid.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All right, do you want to lead that discussion?
But, no, I would just appreciate it because that would give me one way to attend meetings.
Great, I support it.
And I, I don't think, unless there's some hardship that it creates, some major, I don't know, Dory, if you know anything that makes that difficult, but I would really appreciate that. And then whoever else, we never have to worry then in terms of a quorum either because we could pretty easily get it.
My only, the only hardship would be like a barrier in that the interface has been difficult in a number of meetings, including our library board. So at the, the last meeting where I think Vera, I think you held up the speakerphone, was it? Matt, were you on speakerphone? It was awkward, but I went and met with the I T over at Town Hall, we went through it. We, we, I literally, they had me completely on. When I got here, for some reason, the audio wouldn't work. And that was true in the meeting where you were on, you were joining us.
That was the full town meeting. It was horrible for everyone. I wasn't the only one diving in, but a lot of people that were meant to present, I was like, I don't see.
We found the problem with that one, that's rectified, but I think, I don't, I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Because it's not just the board that can attend, it's more people that can attend.
Yeah, true.
We don't have anyone here tonight, you don't have anyone here, but you might if the weather wasn't so bad.
Right.
You, you might if they can just sign on.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
And participate if they have something to say.
Right, even just for public comment, exactly.
So I would recommend it. I can tell you, um, you know, we'll have to manage it with I T and, and our cable services. We have had some challenges with some of the, um, technology, which most of it's been resolved. That part's been resolved, we do have some bolling that goes on. Um, so we're trying to figure out how to stop that. But sometimes you have to shut down the meeting and restart.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
That's great.
So any other discussion on that? So I'm going to, go ahead, Erica.
No, just I want, in, in support, I mean, it's best practices.
I agree. A hundred percent, I totally agree, a hundred percent. So Matt, you made the motion, Erica, you second, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Um, again, I'll just start with you again, Matt.
Yes.
Erica?
Yep.
Vera?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary, all unanimous. We're, we're going, we're going digital. So our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 5th at 6:00 P M here in the Marion Room, but I just want to just reiterate, I would love that, that January meeting, I think it would refresh us and it would help us walk away from the meeting, being able to really think about the February meeting and how to move forward, so.
Like the informal meet, the director meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that would give us a lot of, that would give us an encouragement for the new year, but it would also give us a real, it would help shape what the February 5th meeting looks like. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Okay.
I would have one other request.
Sure.
I'm a big father today.
Okay.
Our April meeting is the 2nd of April. Could we do that on the 9th?